Economic Development Committee, October 17th, 2024.
We call on Economic Development Committee to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are Vicki Deshaun, Carolyn Shireman, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Zion Hickman, Chair. Before we have public participation, we have Casey Grau from the Bucyrus Tourism and the Visitors Bureau to come speak to us today.
Hi, thank you, everyone. So as Zion said, I'm Casey Grau with Tourism and the Chamber of Commerce. I do have a presentation up on the screen over to my right here. So what I wanted to do was provide an overview of both the Chamber of Commerce and the Bucyrus Tourism and Visitors Bureau, just to give everyone an update. So we're going to start with the Chamber of Commerce. What you see here is a list of our events for 2024. And this is quite a large list here, but these are events that we have organized throughout the year, and it really demonstrates one of our goals, which is bringing Chamber members and community together. We couldn't do this without the partnerships that we have, and we form partnerships by being positive, professional, and present. So I want to just pick on a couple of these events to give you some examples here. The Fresh Roast Roundup is listed there first. This is our monthly networking event, and we partner with the Crawford Success Center. They allow us to use their space to hold this event, and in return, we hope that others want to go ahead and use the space too later on, and possibly even take classes there. The Galleon Crestline Chamber and the Bucyrus Chamber hold many events together, such as the Forecast Breakfast, Route 30 Business Expo, and our Spirited Scavenger Hunt, which I'll get to in a moment. The Bucyrus Golf Club was a great partner of ours this year. They helped us with our annual golf outing. Without them, we could not have had as successful of an event as we did. And of course, our Chamber ambassadors help us with every single event, and those ambassadors represent Chamber businesses throughout our community. So these are the events that we have remaining. If you flip over to the next page or see the slide, we have three events remaining for the Chamber. The Scavenger Hunt that I mentioned, we have the Annual Dinner on November 13th, and we have Candlelight Christmas on December 5th. The Spirited Scavenger Hunt, the intent of this event is to get people to participating locations, and these participating locations are shown here on the slide. But these are Chamber members. We are hoping to get individuals into these locations between the time period of October 25th to November 2nd, really just to spend money at these locations, showcase the locations on social media, and have a little bit of fun here. Our Annual Dinner, I mentioned, is November 13th. Judson Lipli, who is from Bucyrus, and many of you may know, will be back as our keynote speaker. This event also honors local leaders, organizations, and businesses in our community, so we're really excited for this event. Candlelight Christmas will be here before we know it. It is December 5th. Now, this, I want to point out, is a change. The date we originally had is December 6th. It is now December 5th. So please, if you're planning to attend, make note of that. The event is in partnership with Altrusa, FC Bank, and Kowanis. Altrusa will be doing a tree lighting ceremony at Shine's Art Park. Mrs. Claus will be there reading a Christmas story, and children who attend will all get a book of that story. And then Altrusa will also be organizing a window decorating contest among our businesses. FC Bank is bringing back the ice skating rink, and Kowanis, of course, will do their Santa Parade that night. We, the Chamber, will also have the carriage rides again for the evening for free for community members. So please plan to attend that. Also thought you would like just a quick update on the merger. So as many of you know, we are getting ready to merge with the Galleon Crestline Area Chamber, which will take effect January 2025. We are on schedule for that merger. We do get questions frequently about, well, where is the location of the new Chamber going to be? So we are going to maintain our Bucyrus location and the Galleon location, so both of those brick-and-mortar locations will remain, so that we can have good representation within those communities. Chamber members, though, can come to either of those locations for the services that they So before I jump into the Tourism and Visitors Bureau, I'll pause there just to see if the committee has any questions on Chamber activity. Okay. All right. So Bucyrus Tourism and Visitors Bureau, really excited about the work we're doing here. Thought it would be good just to kind of remind everybody who may be watching or listening that we receive 50% of bed tax or lodging tax dollars. This is not a tax on Bucyrus residents. Instead, it comes from when individuals stay at our Holiday Inn or Quality Inn. Those individuals pay a tax for that stay. Money then goes to the city, and we receive 50% of those funds. We do have a Tourism Advisory Council that meets the second Tuesday of every month. We are fortunate to have Zion Hickman on that committee, as well as representatives from local businesses who do benefit from tourism. During the third quarter, you may have seen, we launched a new website, or what we call a landing page. If you haven't had a chance to see it yet, please go check it out. It is called visitbucyrus.org. As it stands today, there is an Apple-themed video for the fall. However, we are working on additional campaigns to be shown on that website once the Apple theme kind of expires for the fall. If you continue to scroll down on the webpage, once you check it out, you're going to see information about places to stay, places to eat, places to drink, and there is also a calendar of events that we're working to update. So a really robust site that we'll continue to leverage as we move forward. We also have a partnership with Tourism Ohio, and you may have seen their recent blog, which highlights Bucyrus. The blog is about charming Ohio towns to check out this fall for a perfect weekend getaway, and Bucyrus is highlighted as one of five locations there. So what you're seeing up on the screen is just a snippet of that blog. We also have a partnership with ohio.org, so we do co-branded marketing ads with them. The benefit of this is they reach a larger market than what we do on our own through Ohio, the heart of it all. And once they put out that campaign, we can then share it to reach additional kind of markets and people who may not otherwise know about events that are happening in Bucyrus. And this is just an example of one of those co-branded ads. We continue to do work on social media, so in addition to events that we share from local organizations and businesses, each Tuesday, we have a trivia question to get people engaged on social media with us. That trivia question typically pertains to a historical item in Bucyrus or a tourist attraction. And then on Fridays, we do a sample itinerary for the weekend, so trying to get people to have information about what's going on in the area, so they can spend time here in Bucyrus. And what you're seeing on the screen is an example of one of those sample itineraries. We also have a monthly newsletter called Tourism Talk. It has over 1,500 subscribers now. If you were to go to the landing page that I mentioned earlier and scroll to the bottom, you can subscribe to this newsletter. The highlights of the newsletter is that it includes marketing efforts, events throughout Bucyrus that are coming. We do a photo of the month, and that photo typically comes from somebody outside of our organization, so we try to highlight that person who has submitted that photo. We do a foodie feature in this newsletter, so we try to promote local dishes that come from our restaurants that are really fun, and we do Bucyrus Fun Facts. So this newsletter will continue to evolve into next year. We're kind of just getting started with it, but we're already getting some really great feedback on it already. So in regards to outreach, we do have a consultant for this year. She will be with us until November. Elaine Naples is her name with Community Heart Consulting. Listed on this slide are some of the activities that she has done for us. Welcoming visitors from tours that have come to Pickwick, speaking at Louisville Park on Johnny Appleseed Events, and then attending the America 250 Ohio Commissions Meeting in Columbus. Heather Martin and I, next week, will be with a group of individuals from a homemakers club. There will be 75 women from multiple counties throughout the state that want to come and learn about Bucyrus. So we will be presenting to them at Pickwick. They'll be receiving goodie bags from local businesses, and our job for that event is to really promote tourist attractions for the area, so we're really excited about that. Some of the events that we completed in the third quarter include the Best Worst Bike Ride that was in conjunction with the Bratwurst Festival. We have participants from all over Ohio attend. People from Cleveland, Finley, Galloway, Marion, Tiffin. It was a great day, and everybody said they were coming back next year, so we're excited to hold this event again. We also promoted Ohio Open Doors. Now, you may be wondering what that is. It's a statewide biannual event that encourages local historical landmarks and building owners to open their doors for events and other initiatives for their organization. So some of those events that we helped to promote was the Oakwood Cemetery Walk, Prairies to Powwows from the Harvey One Room School, behind-the-scenes tours from the library, the Great Apple Giveaway Day, Locomotive to Caboose from the Bucyrus Preservation Society, and also events from the Arts Council. So as we wrap up third quarter, the final thing I want to say is Candlelight Christmas. While I noted this was a Chamber event, we are going to use some of the marketing that we have through tourism set up to really market Bucyrus and showcase Bucyrus during this event. This is an event where Bucyrus is beautiful. It is all year round, but especially during the holidays, we want people to know what it looks and feels like to come to Bucyrus. So you'll see some extra marketing for this event as well. And that is all I had. Can I answer any questions for you? Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I don't have any questions, but I will say Elaine has done a fantastic job with this. We're sad to see her go in November, but I'm sure that with all of what we've done so far in those meetings has been very successful.
Yeah, I'll echo that. We are sad to see Elaine go. Hopefully, she'll continue to be a partner of ours. She's really laid a good foundation for us of marketing material and items that we'll continue to leverage into the subsequent years, but definitely concur with your sentiment with her. So thanks, Zion. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So now, we will move on now to public participation. Seeing none.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
I would like to do public participation.
I believe you can do that from your seat if you want.
But I think I'd like to podium. Carolyn Shireman, 1065 East Bill Avenue, Bucyrus. I forgot my notes, so I'm going to kind of ad lib. I would like you to meet Bridgette. Bridgette is a lady that came to our council meeting Tuesday night.
Okay, point of order. What does this have to do with economic development? I'm just asking.
Because I was told I could speak here.
But is it pertaining to economic development?
Community? Kind of, but now tell me when I can speak, so I can speak, because it's very important. Could you help me with that, Ms. Deshaun? When am I allowed to speak?
I guess I'm not sure what it is you're wanting to talk about. I know that the young lady was at our council meeting Tuesday.
It's very relevant because of things that was put on the Bucyrus Facebook page.
I recommend that no city officials speak to that.
They don't have to, but I can.
You're a city official.
And why do you recommend I can't speak to it? Give me one good reason.
I'm not going to comment on that, but I recommend that you...
No, I want to...
I'm not going to comment on that, but I recommend that you do not...
Good, and let me finish my comment.
Let it be noted for the record. I recommend that you do not speak on this.
Yes, and let it be known for the record that I have to speak on this as a council member.
As a council member.
As a council member.
Then I'm definitely calling a point of order because...
Yeah, because this, I don't think what is going to be talked about is going to be referring to economic development at all.
No.
It's not pertinent to what we're doing.
My question back to you then, Ms. Deshaun, is can you tell me when I'm allowed to walk up here and speak? Since you know all the rules, I'm asking you, when do you think it's okay for me to come up here and say what I got to say?
Not at all.
Oh, and give me a reason why, please. Do you know what I'm going to say? Do you know what I'm going to say?
Carolyn.
Do you know what I'm going to say?
Ms. Shireman, if this is not pertinent to economic development, I'm going to have to ask you to return to your seat.
And I'm going to go back to my conversation with these two people.
Please return to your seat.
Well, I have a time to talk.
Please return to your seat.
If I'm asked a question by the committee, I can answer that.
Okay, committee, would you please ask him?
If her topic is not relating to economic development...
I'm not talking economic development. I'm saying later on. I was told I could come up now.
If it is not pertinent to any committee or any of the committee's agendas, it is not to be spoken about, unless it is pertaining to the committee that it is in, you can't speak about it.
So I can come up here, the following council meeting? Excuse me, Mr. Goebrich. I can come up here at the next council meeting and put out what I'm going to say.
If I'm asked...
With pictures?
If I'm asked about the rules by a council member or a committee member, I will answer it.
My next, our next council meeting, I will be requesting to speak at this meeting, okay? And there's a lot to say. Thank you for closing me down again, though. It's a pattern, Vicki.
It was not pertinent to the committee.
Okay, Mr. Zion, you're the man. Proceed.
We are still on public participation, yes. Pertaining to economic development.
Okay, well, all Zion wants to say is I was told I could talk at a committee, Jerry Miller, 800 Drive Street. I was told the only thing to talk about at a committee meeting is pertaining to what that committee is talking about. So I had to wait until the next regular meeting at the first public participation, and then you can speak on anything you want to.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
But my point was, I didn't want to be shut down in five minutes, because it's going to take longer.
Because it was not pertaining to our committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zion. You got your point across. Proceed.
Any more public participation for economic development? Seeing none, I will move on to the approval of minutes from the October 3rd, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
I'd like to approve the minutes from October 3rd, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee Meetings.
I have a motion for Ms. Shireman. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Deshaun. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do we have any open projects we would like to discuss?
I do not.
I don't either.
All right. Moving on to public participation for the final time.
I'm watching you, Mr. Miller.
Can we not?
Mr. Goebrich?
Ms. Shireman.
I'm calling to your attention right now that I'm already being harassed...
Ms. Shireman, that is enough.
...by Mr. Miller sitting in the visiting seat.
That was removed.
And he just looked at me and went like this.
Carolyn, if you don't stop, I'm going to have you removed from this committee meeting.
I'm asking opinion of Mr. Goebrich.
You are being very disruptive.
Really?
Yes.
So you're not going to say anything? You're leaving him go?
I haven't been asked a question.
I just, what do you do to a visitor who was sitting out there going like this to me during a meeting?
I was going to say, I didn't see any...
You didn't have to. I saw it, and it was Mr. Miller that did it.
We have a citizen at the podium. I'd like to hear what they have to say. Mr. White?
I would have liked to have had my answer from Mr. Goebrich.
Enough.
I didn't observe anything. I can't speak to it.
Okay, thank you. That will be noted for the record.
Mr. White?
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. After the, I have some questions for economic development. After the partnership gave their presentation, I noticed some inconsistencies in the last report. I noticed that the last update by David Zach, okay, and the new one that was done Tuesday night, 92% of it is the same stuff. It mimics each other. Everything he said, she said. There was only a few changes in there. I question that because to me, a report should be an update about information that pertains to the city of Bucyrus, okay? Not Galleon, not Crestline, not Crawford County, but Bucyrus only, and how everything is economic development for our city. I also noticed some inconsistencies, one in particular about new jobs. David Zach quoted, and his last one was 63. The new report says 55. I also found similar inconsistencies in the stories, the strategic, basically, it was cut and paste. Pretty simple. I went through it today, got my records request, went through it today, and it's basically all cut and paste from David Zach's exact presentation. There wasn't really anything in that presentation that made any sense whatsoever, ever, from what David Zach said to what Sarah said. Nothing. It was basically verbatim, cut and paste. I would like to know, in these reports that affect the city of Bucyrus, that's what we're paying $50,000 for, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so when jobs are created in Bucyrus, it should state basically what we are, okay? I understand it's a whole partnership of everything, but I think the report should be specialized on Bucyrus and Bucyrus only. How many jobs were created, okay? How many business contacts were made for Bucyrus, okay? Specifically for our city, so that the residents know that we're getting the bang for our dollar, our $50,000 per year into this fund. I mean, that's plain and simple. I couldn't believe that this was just cut and paste when I went over it today. Just cut and paste. I mean, you can read it word for word, okay? I also want, as you, as the chairman, and that's on that committee, there are 20 board members, Board of Directors, that are going to a retreat. Who pays for that?
I'm not sure what you wrote down to.
Well, they have an annual retreat. As a matter of fact, Sarah brought that up. And did Mr. Zach brought that up?
Oh, that.
Yeah. Who pays for that?
I...
Does that come out, does that come out of our $50,000 that we give to the, you know, to them for that, for a retreat, to send them somewhere?
That wouldn't be more of a question for Ms. Hurley.
Well, you're the representative of Bucyrus, correct? I'm asking you to find that out for me.
I can do that.
Okay. So that's kind of my thing. The second question that has to do with economic development. Dealing with the Tourism and Visitors Bureau, I noticed on the expense report, we're spending a ton of money per month, well, actually, it's not broken down per month, some are three months, of consulting fees for $12,500. That was in April for three months. Then in June, two months, $8,033.32. And then we have some more expenditures of $300 and some odd dollars for consulting fees. Then $4,166.67 consulting fees. And then branding of Dora was $800. And then again, in August, we have the other $4,166.67 consulting fees. Plus, we had in their travel time for consulting fees of $792.46. Then in September, we also had another consulting fee of $4,166.67. I mean, that's over $29,000, almost 30 grand that we're, that they're spending. For what? Okay? And if you look at it, it looks like it's going to continue to November, which is going to put it right around, or even December, it's going to put around $41,000 in consulting fees. That's a lot of consulting fees, you know? I looked at some of the videotapes, okay? I think they're good. But one, a question is, is we're only promoting, in the one tape, we're only promoting certain businesses, okay? I'm not going to name them, they're on the tape, but we're only promoting certain businesses. We have a lot of small-town businesses here in this town that should have been promoted. Our murals weren't even promoted. That brings in tourism. None of our murals were in that video. Not a one. I mean, there's other small businesses in this town that should have been put in that video, okay? I'm not going to comment on the contents of those videos, because I think it was pretty much, in my book, a sham, okay? That's my personal opinion. I'm questioning these, because if this keeps going, this money that they had in there is going to keep dwindling and dwindling and dwindling down. Thank you.
Mr. White, can I ask you a question, realistically?
Yes.
I assume you got those numbers from an expense account that I had run for you. Was it just for the partnership and the Tourism Bureau? Were those the two?
No, it was just for the Tourism Bureau.
Just for the Tourism Bureau? Okay.
Yeah, but I mean, we're spending a lot of money here in consulting fees. A lot of money. That's coming out of that bed tax. I like to know why, and I like to know with who.
Well, we are, like, it's in the ORC that we have to give half of our bed taxes to the Tourism Bureau.
I understand that.
Okay.
No, I know, I fully understand that from you the last time.
Yes, yes.
But I'm, I'm calling out on the expenditures.
Okay.
This is what I'm calling out on, the expenditures. This is a lot of money being spent. Is this being paid for somebody's salary? Okay? What's it being paid for? I'd like to know each one of these line items. I'd like to know who it's with. And that's my right, because under the agreement with the city, okay? With the agreement with the city, I have a right to ask that, and I have a right to request that information.
I agree. Just for clarification, so when you're mentioning consulting fees, are you saying that that's something that was on the, a report that I gave you, or is that something from the Tourism Bureau?
That's from them, directly in the package.
Okay, I was just trying to...
It's from their own words.
Gotcha, okay.
So, and like I said, under the agreement of the services with the Tourism Bureau under Section 5, Number C, it states, "At all times, both parties agreed to follow federal, state, and municipal laws and regulations, including but not limited to those dealings with equal opportunity employment opportunities, discrimination, public records, ethics, and records retention." And that's what I'm requesting publicly.
Kirk Fankhauser, 616 Prospect Street. Since we're still talking about economic development... Since we're still talking about economic development, and what is Bisciris lacking right now is small business growth. Every once in a while, we do get a small business that decides to start up, and most recently, what I've seen for that is, right on the main street through town, is the Bisciris Tap House. I think, you know, it's a lot for a person to start a small business. There, people don't really fully understand the lengths you have to go through acquiring a property, putting blood, sweat, and tears into that property. I would think we need to start as a council, or at least the Economic Development Committee, could we send a letter of thank you to the owner of that new business and say, hey, we really appreciate you coming into our town and spending money, investing in Bisciris? Because I, I don't know how many council members have been in there, but that is a very nice addition to our town.
It looks very nice on the inside.
And thank you, Mr. Hickman, for letting me speak.
I actually don't think that's a bad idea. Do we have any more public participation for economic development? Senator Nine, I will adjourn at six thirty-one PM.
Health and Safety Committee, October seventeenth, 2024.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at six thirty-two PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, C. Aaron Sherry, James Me, and myself, Vicki Deshawn, as chair. First, we have public participation, and I've asked for, let me get my paperwork here. I've asked for Susan Fritz and Becca Green, if they would come forward. They're going to talk about their trap-neuter return program.
I'm gonna pass this out to you.
Oh, okay.
So this is our new flyer.
And this is enough here to?
Yeah, you should have seven.
Great, thank you.
All right. Okay, first of all, while you're passing that out, I would just like to say thank you so much for allowing me to address the overpopulation of cats. We all know that we got problems, right? My name is Susan Fritz. I'm from Crestline, Ohio. We are under the umbrella of the Bisciris Area Community Foundation, so therefore, we are a 501(c)(3). I know we've been asked that before on some of the other places that we've gone, so just kind of want to put that out there. I think one of the issues that I wanted to address is some of the, I think Ms. Victoria Caldwell had a video sometime in July, and I think with the ordinance and some of the testing, that whether we do or we do not do on cats was the issue. And I think one of the things that she might have brought up, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? But I think she wanted to put a stipulation that if we're rescuing or trapping the strays or the cats in certain areas, are we test, testing for rabies, leukemia, and AIDS, okay? So saying that, I would have to say that there are times where case by case is different. Let me tell you a little story. There was a stray that just got into my backyard, and his whole face was ripped down. Very, very, kind of scary, because I'm like, okay, I hope he doesn't have AIDS, because we all know that the AIDS part is a little bit, if he bites another cat, it doesn't go from human to cat, it goes from cat to cat, okay? And I didn't want him to run around all over creation looking like that. So we took him to Erica, how do you say her last name? Schiber. I go to her all the time. She's our veterinarian. She's wonderful. So does Becca. Becca goes through her, too. So I told her, I said, listen, if he, will you please test for that first? Because if he does have AIDS, we're just gonna go ahead and put him down, because there's no way that he should be out there running around, right? So she calls me, and she's like, no, he doesn't. I was shocked, really. So I think, and Harold and I have been there, my husband and I have been there many times, and we had asked her, listen, is this something that everyone should be doing? If you're, if they're bringing in their cats, or, you know, if we're collecting some of these cats, trapping some of these cats, or other people are just bringing their pet owner cats in, and we're getting them spayed and neutered up at Hope, at Upper Sandusky, is this something that we should be doing? She goes, first of all, I appreciate all of you guys. I appreciate every trap and neuter in the community, and the Humane Society, any Humane Society, because we're all on the same page. We just want to control the population of these cats, right? And we want to do it in a humane way, all right? So she told me, for her, it wasn't necessary. It's necessary for you as a staff. If you are touching wild animals, if you are, have a suspect of a wild animal, but most of the time that I have been doing this since 2004, I've never, ever met a tomcat that has ever bit me, scratched me, or anything. They, most of the time, they're scared, and they won't let you touch them. Now, there's a lot of issues and definitions about cats, right? And then I went on to talk to her a little bit about the leukemia and AIDS, and she goes, I very rarely, rarely do we ever get those tested out. Now, I do know, in Hope, we use Hope, I do know that the Humane Society of Crawford County uses Hope, but they only test for rabies and leukemia. They do not test for AIDS. So I do want to put that out there. It is pricey, it is expensive. However, our committee, we were just, you know, we just started this year. We're just kind of like crazy cat people. And we love these cats, because, you know, I mean, there's a lot of health benefits to having a cat, if you don't know. I do want to let you know that. They lower your risk of heart disease. The purring helps to heal your bones, tendons, and muscles. They reduce stress and anxiety, and they help you sleep better. As a matter of fact, there's more facts, scientific facts, more than that, and it is on the United States Humane Society website. The other thing that I wanted to ask was, I wanted to kind of, I had heard different people that, the way that they think that a cat population be, to be controlled, would be to starve them. Now, think about that. How inhumane is that? Starving them, freezing them, burning them, drowning them, taking them out to the country and letting them die. Is that humane? No. And I want to tell you right now, if we do that, like other communities have done that in the United States, your ecosystem, even in this small community, will be turned upside down. Cats, horses, dogs, anything that could be a pet, they eat the things that we cannot. They, bugs, mosquitoes with the Nile disease. If you can think about clear back, and I think it was the ancient times where, you know, they had the bubonic plague, the Black Death, I mean, hey, you know, that is why the Humane Society was first brought in. In the eighteenth century, they decided, listen, we can't let these animals suffer so much. It's a sad thing to let a small animal that is helpless. And I definitely don't like when someone says, if there's a pregnant cat, don't feed them, you're only gonna have two instead of four. It's not right. We all know that it's not right. It just isn't. So my thought is, I would love to extend to Victoria Caldwell. I would love to, to be alongside her, to help her, and that's what we're doing right now. We are going place to place. We do the farmer's market, we do various fundraisers, and a hundred percent goes to helping other people who can't afford this, the spaying, the neutering, and the vaccinations, or the testing. So I would think that if, if there is a stipulation in the ordinance that says we must test, then that would mean that we all should test, but hope that the Bisciris uses, up at, I'm sorry, I misspoken, that the Humane Society of Crawford County uses, they do not test for AIDS. We would have to go to the veterinarians for that. The veterinarians are anywhere from fifty-five to sixty dollars apiece. And we've done pretty good so far. We're, we're getting into other organizations. They have been testing it for us. They just put it right, you know, within the spaying and neutering. So, which is great, you know? The other thing I wanted to let you know is, I did write to, I think his name is Mark, how do I say it? Just bear with me for a second, so I can look at my notes. His name is Mark Fenneren. He is the Ohio State Director of the Humane Society. I asked him, I said, this is what I said. I said, Mark, I said, I'm curious, if the Humane Society tells people to stop feeding cats, kittens, and pregnant cats to control population, is this something the Humane Society stands for? Please tell me it isn't so. I help communities to control the population, but, but, but not by starving cats or kittens, but by reeducating the community they need to help, by getting them spayed, neutered, but not by starving them. And he went on to say, thank you, Susan. That doesn't sound like something coming from our organizations. Could you point to me towards where you found those statements? In terms of community cats living outdoors, we promote TNR policies for communities to control populations and reduce conflicts with humans. You can find more information on what we do, and they have a plethora of everything on that website, www.humanesociety.org, outdoor cats. So I want you to ask me anything you want to ask me. I am here as a, this isn't about me. This is really about helping these small animals that we really desperately need. We can't just ignore their species. We can't shoot them. We can't destroy them. They're part of us, just like any other animal that's been here, by God's grace. So that's all I have to say. If you have any other questions before Becca tells her story, yes.
My question really is, as it pertains to this body, what is it that you're seeking from us legislatively?
Legislatively, we are just, basically, I just wanted to kind of put it out there, because we want to make sure that you know where we stand. We want to make sure that if you say to us, listen, you have to test rabies, you have to test leukemia, AIDS, we'll do it. We'll raise the funds. If you're saying, look, we're okay, you can trap wherever you want to trap, in the Crawford County.
Well, this body can only control the city loans of Bisciris. We can't tell you anything about Crawford County.
Right. Gotcha, gotcha. So I think I wanted to come here to talk to you a little bit about what was raised in July. So I just kind of wanted to give you my thoughts. Now, we'll do whatever it takes, because, you know, that's what we do. We volunteer, we help our community, and it's, it's just not about us. That's why we do it. And I just wanted to make sure that if the Humane Society does it, okay, fine, then we'll do it. If they don't do it, why was that brought up? I don't know. Any other questions? You have a question, sir?
I'm thinking about it.
Okay, go right ahead.
So, we're caught in between a rock and a hard place. This legislation's hard enough to put through, but you're saying we shouldn't test for AIDS, and Humane Society, Crawford County Humane Society is saying we should.
Well, that's what I was thinking in July, that she, there was like, she's kind of saying that there might be a stipulation. Now, you can, I put some calls out to Victoria. Her and I are kind of playing phone tag right now. I haven't had a chance to really talk to her, because I really do want to come alongside her and ask her what she really is desiring from this as well. I'm just here to tell you our story. I'm here just to tell you, we're here to do whatever it takes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
If I could just take a minute of your time.
Yes.
I know that Mrs. Caldwell is here tonight.
Okay.
And I guess, may I ask, Victoria, were you planning on talking tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Go right ahead.
Hi, my name's Becca. I am also part of the volunteer TNR group. I do want to piggyback off of what Sue just said. Testing for AIDS and leukemia is not really typically part of communities' TNRs, what they're looking to do, their, their mission. So asking a TNR volunteer group to test cats for feline AIDS and leukemia is kind of excessive, because we're here to help with the control of the population. There's really, you know, the Humane Society adopts the animals out, but there's no low income, there's no assistance for any type of spay or neuter coming from them. So we would love, like Sue said, to join hands and kind of come together with that, because for a community to not have any type of low income or, you know, discounts, and people have to pay two, three hundred dollars to spay a cat, a female cat, nobody has that. So I'm gonna tell you guys a little bit about myself real quick, because I want you guys to understand where I'm coming from on this, because I am not from this area. I have recently moved out here in the last two and a half years. So I'm a pharmacy supervisor. I work full-time. I'm very busy. I, my husband is here. We have two pre-teen daughters. We relocated due to my husband's job promotion two and a half years ago. We have a five-acre property. We inherited about half a dozen cats right off the bat, not knowing. We have a barn. They're stray. They're feral. Out of my pocket, I have paid to have them fixed. Vet care, some have been put down for other reasons. I feed them, and I'm okay with that, but, I mean, they're feral, they're stray. They're not coming into my house. I have my own indoor cats. But I fortunately can't afford that. Not everyone can afford that. Everywhere I go around here, stray cats, kittens, all of it. This community really needs, really needs to be up to times, like other communities, with some sort of program. I wish that the Humane Society had some sort of low-income program for spay and neuter. I have no options. I've been paying out of my pocket, like I said. I try to find low-income places, like out in Mansfield. It's like pulling teeth. You gotta get on a list. You gotta be there at a certain time. It's hard. Like I said, I work full-time. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys a little bit of information about feline AIDS and leukemia. And this is nothing against the Humane Society, because I've donated to them. I think that's great, but we need something more out here. We need more support. So recently, I hooked up with this great group of people that do the TNR, and I think it's fantastic. But where I came from, we had a lot more support. We had a lot more programs. So coming out here was a huge shock for me, to see that when I'm calling and making phone calls, I have no options, except to pay out of my pocket, big bucks. Like I said, we live on five acres. People drop them off on the road, you know, on the side of the road. They end up, had an eight-week-old kitten end up on our back, back deck, last November. Where did it come from? Somebody dropped it off. Whose problem is it? Mine? Or do I leave it outside and let nature take care of it? I'm just not that person. Can't do it. So really, some of the things I want to talk about, too, is feline leukemia and AIDS testing. Feline leukemia only occurs in two to three percent of the cat population. Two to three percent. I mean, to ask a volunteer program to spend the money to test, what, sixty dollars a test?
Mm-hmm, it is sixty.
Two to three percent of the population. That's all you're gonna find that are gonna test positive. We're not here to test them. We're here to fix them. That should not, I'm asking you that that is not a stipulation for us to. you that that is not a stipulation for us to continue with this volunteer organization. I mean, we're taking our own time, out of our own lives, to try to make the community better. Do you guys want to see all these stray cats running around? I don't. It's sad, and it's just, it's a nuisance to some people. It's not always a death sentence anyways when they do have it. A lot of cats are healthy. I mean, you can talk to veterinarians about it. I ask that you guys educate yourselves on this. Go ahead.
Sorry. Just so you know, every time you hit that, it echoes through the thing online. So I just figured, just so you know, so people can hear you, because when they, when you hit it, then they don't...
I'm a hand talker. I'll tie it behind my back.
I was like, I know you want to get the point across, and I wasn't trying to...
I'll keep it behind my back, because otherwise, they're flying, so it's just who I am. So, and not to mention, most vets don't even recommend euthanasia when they're not sick. So really, it's just, it's like making us jump through hoops for something that isn't necessary. We want to fix the cats. We want to control the population and be done with it at the end of the day. I ask that you guys don't put that stipulation on it, that we're able to trap in Bucyrus and help with the population control. Like we said, we would love to work with the Humane Society. I would love to see something come out of that for people that can't afford it. I'll wrap up, and I appreciate you guys' time, honestly. But I really just wanted to get that point across. We're simply here to address and assist with the high feral and stray population, and testing is expensive. It's not part of our mission. And then, as for rabies shots, that's something that we could look into doing in the future, but they're only good for one to two years. The odds of trapping a stray or feral cat twice is like slim to none. So if you did get them the rabies shot, they're not going to last.
And plus, your cat hasn't seen any feral in the past.
Yeah. The last case of rabies in a cat was like 2017, I think. So, I mean, that's like slim to none. So really, I stand before you as a member of the community to look at the big picture, educate you guys, you know, yourselves before you make a decision or whatnot on this, because I really want to see this work. I really don't want to see this community not have any options. So, thank you guys for listening to me. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Victoria, would you like to come to the podium?
She told me, she wanted me to go.
Oh, okay.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect. I appreciate the previous speaker and their strong passion for the cats in Bucyrus. However, I've dealt with cats at my property. 1675 South Industries, where my office is, I've owned it for nine years. I see cats running around. Maybe about three different ones, and this is over the course of the last nine years. It's not, I, I don't mind them. They actually keep the mice from getting into my buildings. I have not had to put any mice poison out that last nine years until this year. I have mice. Now, I don't want to see less cats running around right now, because if it goes down anymore, I'm going to have more mice. Now, I, I appreciate, I'm sorry that I'm speaking against the last speaker, and I'm, this is nothing against them, but Bucyrus is 200-plus years old. There's been cats in Bucyrus for 200 years. Does this body need to pass an ordinance having to do with cats? I don't believe so, because I believe God takes care of the animals for us. We've got way bigger problems in Bucyrus than a couple of stray cats running around. Now, I'm not going to come back up and speak anymore on this tonight, because I believe in the 111.18 order of business where public participation is once at the beginning of the meeting. I don't believe in the musical chairs, where people just come up in the middle of these committee meetings, 25 different times, some of them. And, you know, if you have something to say, you can say it one time.
Do you have anything else to say about trap-neuter-return? I, I really don't need to hear your opinion on what you think about the rules. We're here not to talk about the rules. We're here to talk about trap-neuter-return. If you have nothing more to say about that, then I would ask you to sit down, and then if Mrs. Caldwell would like to come to the podium.
Yes, the trap-neuter-return. If we pass some piece of legislation with cats, I don't want to see our police officers having to be tasked with enforcing this thing. They're already swamped now. They're probably sitting down there right now thinking, "Oh, my God. They're going to make us start going out on all these cat calls now? Come on. Let's, let's forget about this stuff." Thank you.
Victoria, did you want to speak?
Yes. I do have packets for the...
Okay.
I'll hand them to you.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you so much for inviting me to come this evening. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council regarding this trap-neuter-release. I have been in contact through telephone...
Victoria, I'm sorry. I forgot. Did I forget that with the two other individuals?
Yeah.
When we come to the podium, we state our name and our address.
I apologize.
And I do apologize.
I apologize. My name is Victoria Caldwell. I'm the Executive Director of the Humane Society, serving Crawford County in Bucyrus, Ohio. Our address is 3590 State Route 98 in Bucyrus, Ohio.
Thank you.
Yes. So, as I was saying, I have had telephone contact with Ms. Fritz. I just haven't had the opportunity to touch base and be able to sit down and speak with her, and I'm absolutely looking forward to that. I think there are a lot of misconceptions, and there's been a lot of misspeak as to what our organization stands for and what we encourage people to do or not to do with their pets. We are an organization that sees 20 to 40 cats a week. We take them by appointment at this time, because we cannot overtax our facility or our staff in taking care of the ones that would come if we did not do it by appointment only. When people call us and ask us how to find a way to get rid of the cats on their front porches, the first question I ask them is, "Do you have food on your porch for the cats?" And if they say yes, then I tell them, "That's what's attracting them. If you do not want them on your porch, if you do not want them on your property, you may consider removing the food." Now, I'm sure that there are plenty of other places for those cats to eat in that neighborhood. As I drive around towns in Crawford County, I see food bowls on many porches, and trash cans that are open, and bins behind grocery stores that are also available sources for food, and of course, natural wildlife and bugs, like they stated. My questions tonight are not going to be numbers, because, you know, we can spout numbers until you're blue in the face, and I've found a lot of times that liars figure and figures lie, so it's better to just leave well enough alone. The questions I do have, though, for this committee are in regards to the ordinance. It's my understanding that there were no legal issues with anybody doing trap-neuter-release in this community. Am I correct?
I believe you're right.
Okay. Then why would you want more government intervention, regulation, and oversight when several members of this community have been doing this out of their own pockets, their own time, and their own money for many years, both in Bucyrus and Galleon and Crestling? The additional responsibilities under this new chapter, or, I'm sorry, new section, they require additional time and responsibilities to be spent by city officials. Shouldn't there be an annual fee for that? If they're going to be taxed with doing more with this ordinance, shouldn't there be a permitting or registration fee? Also, veterinarians that are providing the trap-neuter-release, you know, you want to make sure that they've got appropriate information going out to people that are, that are doing this. Like, if they would trap an animal, what are the parameters for a surgical candidate? If the animal is sick or injured, which I wish I had put together a presentation of the cats that I've seen this week alone, but if they're not a surgical candidate, then what are we going to do with them at that point? Okay? And why would you ever want to discourage anyone from serving their community by trying to give aid and assistance to our underrepresented free-roaming cat population with the threat of a fourth-degree misdemeanor? Okay? Some of these things just don't make sense to me. And some of this information you'll see in this, that I'm going to hand to you, wouldn't it be practical for us to sit down, meaning the animal welfare organizations in this community, which would be myself, possibly the dog warden, although the dog warden has nothing really to do with cats, and Ms. Fritz and her organization, to figure out what we can do together, rather than tax a city with an ordinance that they're going to have to keep track of? And also, a question that I had, which was, again, brought up, and it was in an article that you will see from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, that stated that feral cat colonies that are being managed or permitted or registered groups potentially open cities up for risk of litigation when unsuspecting citizens are bitten, scratched because of higher concentration of free-roaming cats in public areas. So if you are saying, "Yes, this is a great idea," and then somebody gets bitten or scratched because of it, because if you have a colony of them somewhere, there are going to be more of them in that area that could bite or scratch unsuspecting people. So these are things that are all covered in this. I guess my idea is that organizations that are in place to do this type of thing already, people that are already doing this on their own, with their own money and their own time, shouldn't we be the ones that are getting together to do this? And like I said, I haven't had the opportunity to get in touch with Ms. Fritz and, and have a discussion, and I hope we can, because it should be between ourselves. It should be with the organizations that are charged with helping our underserved animals in the community. So, that's all I had. And some of the questions that I have written on the front were already answered, so I didn't ask them.
Okay. Now, I will say that myself, I think what Mrs. Caldwell has stated, and just as Mrs. Fritz and Mrs. Green talking about the three of you, your groups or whatever, getting together, I will say in defense of the committee, you know, we had an individual come and speak about the trap-neuter-return program, and that was placed in our committee to discuss. And this is really, I believe, the first time that we've heard of the groups getting together and talking among themselves, and there not being city involvement, if you will, on the trap-neuter-return part of it. So I don't know what the committee's thoughts are. If we just want to sit back, do nothing at this time, let the groups get together. Yes, Phil, I'll have you come up in just a second here. And I guess maybe I should stop and not talk, and I will let Mr. Jakonowitz come up, and, because he also wanted to talk about the cat issue. If you want to come up, then, Phil?
Thank you. I assume this is still the public...
Yes, it is. So your name and address, please.
Yes, Phil, Shawitz. Lieutenant, South Spring Street, just over there. So again, I'm processing the information I hear. I don't really have a strong opinion at this point. As I understand, this committee is looking at this legislation from a two-headed standpoint. One is TNR, and the other is the nuisance in at-large regulations that already exist and redoing that legislation. Is that correct? Yes?
Well, we, really, it was the trap-neuter-return that the committee was talking about. Aaron?
I was going to say, and they brought up the fact that this was completely outdated. Somebody from several different groups had said that, and that there were things in here that were outdated, and that's why we had to bring the whole thing in.
Well, that's, that's true, because they did refer to the, oh, what was it?
The things that are crossed out on the first page.
There was an animal warden, and we don't have an animal warden. That was one of the big issues. And then again, that, and then basically, the trap-neuter-return program. Now, I know then after we started talking about the trap-neuter-return, which falls under Chapter 505, Phil, that's then when you came, and then we're talking about the issues that you were having, which were, I guess, outside of the trap-neuter-return program.
The proposed legislation, I think you sent me, or I've seen, though, has both of these.
Right.
So if you're passing something, I was assuming that you're doing both. So I'll just proceed based upon that. My feedback is about TNR, and the way I'm approaching it is that, so we, I have, you know, a dozen cats on my property because of the neighbors. So as a citizen, I'm looking for a mechanism that can deal with this. I mean, you have a mechanism with the dog warden, with dogs, the issues under the umbrella of at-large and nuisance. Is the animal at-large? Is the animal a nuisance? Deal with the animal. However, I like to say that I view this as not a cat problem, right? This is a human judgment behavior problem with regard to dogs at-large and being a nuisance. And with cats, then, it becomes the same thing. As a citizen, I'm looking then for a mechanism of how do you deal with this problem where the neighbors are essentially using my lawn, my property, for their cats, in the way that they think the cats should behave and be allowed to behave on their property, but it's actually happening on my property. So I'm, I'm bringing that perspective and saying, I think that since you're considering both of these legislations, this seems to me to be, TNR seems to be part of that, because the second part of what I could present then is, it seems to me the TNR is almost in contradiction to being, dealing with at-large and nuisance animals. You have a program that says we're going to capture animals that are nuisance and at-large, and then release them back onto my property. That doesn't sound coherent to me. And that's the perspective I'd like to bring so far tonight. And as this unfolds, I'm welcome to hear input and how this proceeds, but that's just my perspective on hearing tonight's presentation and what I know so far. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Long, were you wanting to speak?
Uh, I'd like to say...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Greg, my hand earlier. I thought you saw him.
I, I, I...
Perry Miller, under Rogers Street. This will be short and quick. I just want to make sure I'm hearing things right. The first two ladies that were up here, they want to do a trap-neuter-and-release program, where they're taking the cats back to where they found them and releasing them. So I don't know why Mr. Fankhauser was talking about reducing the population, because, I mean, eventually it'll reduce, which it needs reduced, because there are a lot of cats in the city. We had a male cat, tom cat, outside of our house. We took him ourselves and paid for it, had him neutered. I just want to, I'm not sure, that's what the first group is talking about, right? Trap? So I don't understand he was talking about, you know, they take his mice, now he's got mice. Just kind of threw me for a loop there. I just want to make sure I heard the first lady.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. I have a question for the committee that has been kind of brought up. So, under Section 505.08, hunting prohibited. Just to let you know, under... So under Section 505.08, hunting prohibited, just to let you know on your paper, it states in there, basically, this section does not apply on promptly supervised and controlled means designed to control, eliminate nuisance animals and fouls within the city, its own land set forth. So what is the definition? And I went to the definitions, which is Section 505.02. So what is the definition of control or eliminating nuisance animals? Or just the words "control" or nuisance animals? There is no definition in the chapter of this ordinance whatsoever under definitions.
Greg, I think my opinion of that is that's like the city's deer lottery and things like that, where what it says on, within the city, on city-owned land.
So are people allowed to hunt, according to this, people allowed to hunt cats, dogs, whatever? I mean, you're not defining what a nuisance animal to, some people might say it's a cat or a dog.
Doesn't spell it out very well.
It does not spell it out very well. I think that needs to be relooked at and definitely defined as, you know, what is that? What is allowed, what is not allowed? Because you're saying it's for hunting of deer, or does that include raccoons, squirrels? What is it in pale? Because it's not specifically stated in this section, what is allowed to be hunted? Can you hunt, you know, geese or, you know, dogs, pheasants? What? It's not clearly defined at all. Thank you.
Mrs. Sherrick, I know you were wanting, and I didn't know if you wanted to talk about it tonight or not, but the prohibited animals?
Well, I wasn't sure we were done with the public participation. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
Mike Keefe, zoning administrator. I think maybe for the legislation or the verbiage for that, you should make reference to the State of Ohio Division of Wildlife on what wildlife is allowed to be hunted. I think that's in the hunting manual. I think in the first couple pages of the ODNR Department of Wildlife Hunting Guide of what animals can be trapped, shot, and taken for consumption.
And this is in reference to Mr. White's comment on 505.08?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I'm making comment on that.
Okay.
Are we, you gonna have any more comment on the hunting? Okay.
I mean, I wasn't, where we were discussing hunting tonight, but-
Okay, well, I have another safety thing to bring up. We have a few issues with the commercial vehicles parking on alleys and public streets, and there's an issue with vehicles over five tons going down alleys and doing damage to curbs, sidewalks, and pavement. And I think some of that needs to be more taken, looked at. We've, I've dealt with this a few times in the last couple of weeks, and we're, the police department needs to take a better stance in going after stuff like that.
Now, we talked about that Tuesday, did you not?
I was, I wasn't hearing.
Well, it was brought up Tuesday night, was it not?
Are you, can I ask?
Sure.
Are you saying, like, there's a specific street or alley that wants to limit the wage limit, or?
No, just in general, I mean, we've, I've just had an issue with a vehicle off of South Spring Street, and-
So, so from what we can do legislatively, what are you seeking from us?
We just have to, I think we need to address something in the, just, does traffic ordinance fall under Health and Safety?
The traffic control map does.
Where was that referred Tuesday night?
It was not.
It was not referred, but it was brought up?
It was brought up at the last-
At the last committee meeting.
If it's anything added to the zoning code plating, but-
Then wouldn't it fall under zoning, because it's in the traffic code?
Okay.
Because I can't enforce it because it's in the traffic code, it's not in zoning.
Okay.
But it's not something that would fall under Health and Safety Committee?
Well, for the traffic code, but it would need to be referred first.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you could ask the administration to remember to refer it at the next meeting?
Or to, because of something in there, if there's a possibility that the fines for that could be civil instead of, um-
Punished.
Uh, yeah. Be civil instead of criminal.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's an ongoing inspection of the Swan Building right now in town with the damage that was caused by the tornado, and more information will be given out in the future.
Thanks for that, Pete.
Thank you.
That's all you.
Yeah, I know what I'm doing here. Any more public participation? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion or ask for a motion to approve our October 3rd, 2024 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting minutes.
Mrs. DeShong, may I please make a motion to approve the minutes from October 3rd, 2024, Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Sherrick, second by Mr. Me. All those in favor say, or Mr. Myers, whoa, Mr. Myers, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next on the agenda is our codified ordinance, Chapter 505, which deals with animals and foul. We have heard our speakers on the trap neuter return. We do not have anyone to talk about on the dog bites. And then Erin, I guess this is where I'll ask if you wanted to, because you did not want to speak, correct?
Or you said what I said.
Okay, great. Then Erin, did you want to talk about the prohibited animal part?
Um, yeah, I didn't know if there was a way to get it changed, because when you start looking at this, you've got the prohibited animals, including constrictor snakes, and there's a lot of people in towns that have constrictor snakes. So technically, their pets are illegal right now, but I don't see a problem, like, they're in tanks and being fed small creatures and, no, I do not have any constrictor snakes.
For argument's sake, they're not a problem when they're in the tanks, until they're not. And I think that's the issue at hand, is when one of them gets out, now that becomes a public health hazard.
So I was wondering if we could do it kind of like with dogs, where you have to have a, like a permit, like-
A license?
License, that's the word. Thank you. Like, you know, that way, if you want to have a pet like that, go get your license, not a big deal. That way, it's not-
A licensed snake can still get out of its tank.
Yeah, but we know whose it is then.
So it can have a collar with a tank?
No, just like, just like a licensed dog. You know, you know, if my, if my house has a licensed snake, and Miranda lives next door, and suddenly there's a snake next door, and she calls and says, hey, I have this problem, they realize that there's a licensed snake next, where's your snake, ma'am? You know, that's the things that they do anyway. So that's just, I just, I don't want a snake, but I also don't see that it hurts people to have their pets.
So do you microchip it, or?
Yeah, I mean-
That'd be cool.
They can't wear collars.
I don't think so. They shed, right?
Chase a snake around the yard with them.
But the other thing is, is, um, then you get into, there used to be a house over on Wood Lawn that actually bred pet skunks that were, like, descented, and pet raccoons. And I don't want either of those pets, but I watch these people have them in their houses all the time. It's kind of like having a cat. Again, like, if there was a way, or if they came up and got special permission, you know, something like that, case by case.
Let me ask you this, if I may. Since it appears this Chapter 505 is still going to need to be worked on and what have you, are you okay if we?
Work on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, 100%.
Great, all right.
May I give my thoughts on 505?
Sure.
To that point?
Sure.
I don't know that the TNR stuff needs to be included in this. I think what both the folks that spoke tonight about it, you know, let them work out what they're doing. I don't think it needs city legislative involvement. I think it's great that they're doing it, let them keep doing it, don't impose any more restrictions or fines or penalties or fees on them. Like she said, they're working with volunteers and donated money, let's let them use their money the best way they can and not pay in fees and crap. And Mrs. Caldwell brought up a comment about, do we want to make misdemeanors of certain things? And I think, I agree with her on that, I don't necessarily like that. I agree with what you said, that the whole thing needs to be worked, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we can see here that's just bringing it up to current-day standards, you know, removing the animal warden and things like that. But I think as far as the TNR program and stuff goes, because what if another group wants to do it? I mean, do they need to come and get authorization from the Safety Service Director? As we've talked about, we've got people that are already working hard at their jobs, not add another layer of stuff to them, you know? Let the groups do what they're going to do without a bunch of regulations.
I know Mr. Long had some concern on the dog bite section within, I'm assuming you still have your concern on that, Mr. Long?
Yeah.
505.07?
I don't have any new information, however, I spoke on it.
So I think basically, maybe what we're going to have to do is go back to those committees' meetings and listen to the audio recording, when you talk about that you have nothing more to add other than what you had already mentioned, and then we can pass that information on to the interim law director and, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So I guess, does the committee have any more discussion on Chapter 505 for right now? If not, do we have any questions about our open projects list?
None from me.
I have none. Erin?
No, thank you.
Jim?
Good.
Okey-dokey. Any more public participation?
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. I want to make sure I'm at the correct committee. Property Maintenance Ad-Hoc Committee?
Remember what I told you. It was in the Health and Safety Committee. It was then removed from this committee, and then an ad hoc committee was established.
I'm on that committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
So-
I'm just trying to figure out where we're at with it, because it's not, it's not on your agenda, and so I have a sense that there's nothing going on with it. And that's not my, that's not what I'm interested in.
Okay. It's not on our agenda because it's no longer on our open projects? It, well, I think it's on the open projects, but it has a notation that it's been referred now over to the Property Maintenance Ad-Hoc Committee that was established just for that purpose. Am I correct? And like I say, I'm not using this as an excuse, but you know, we've had our, you know, we've been without a law director, and then we have a law director, and then we don't, and, you know, I commend Mr. Goldberg for all that we have thrown at him and what he has done. I will ask the question, because I do not know, has the property maintenance issue from the Property Maintenance, Maintenance Ad-Hoc Committee, have you been given any information on that? Because I don't know.
Did Miranda email it to you?
I was waiting for him to finish all of the other drafts.
I mean, I know that we had pending drafts for marijuana regulations and food trucks
and those kinds of things that are in regular committee, and it will take me a minute to gather all of that from earlier this year, but, you know.
And I know I have assured you that even though it's not on our committee, the fact that it was originally in our committee, but it's now in the ad hoc, I'm not going to let it slide. I mean, I'm not on that committee, but, you know-
Well, I think that the conversation's been healthy, because it sounds like it's not left counsel given to the law director yet.
Well, it wouldn't be counsel, it would be from the ad hoc committee.
I'm saying the clerk. She said she, correct me, I thought I heard you say you were holding it?
Right.
Yeah, okay, then I heard correctly.
Because it previously was referred to Mr. Gernert.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's quite a lengthy piece that you have there, right? Given the circumstances that we need to get through everything else, and it's definitely on the list still. I mean, I have an entire list for them that I didn't update.
I just want to make sure it's still somewhere that we can have some action on.
Okay.
So, does it go to the law director or not?
Miranda, at your earliest convenience, could you email the law director all of the information?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's been weird, those three or four months here has been weird for previous law director reasons, so it's not, it's not a lick on anybody in the room. I just want to keep it moving, though. So I appreciate it, thank you.
And, you know, to add to that, and I think I stated it on Tuesday, I mean, it could even get weirder, because again, we have our Republican Central Committee that will be meeting on the 24th of this month to make a decision on who are-
Yep. No, I'm watching all that.
Yeah, and you know, it's my understanding that there's several individuals that are putting their quote hat in the ring.
Yep, yep.
So it could be that, you know, we give something to Mr. Goldberg today, and who's to say that next Friday, we have a different, or next, or on the 25th, we have somebody new as an interim law director?
No, I understand, I understand. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon? Carolyn Chyman, 1065 East Bill Avenue. Vicky, can you tell me the other names of the people looking in for the-
I don't think that's my place to say that.
Does anybody know that can tell? I mean, you just brought it up. So I'm, does anybody know who the other ones are?
It's not really this committee, and it's not any of us either, it's the Republican group, you have to get ahold of them.
Well, then Vicky shouldn't have brought it up. If she's going to bring it up, she should name the other two people so we know. This is Vicky's opinion.
Kirk Fan, College, 616 Prospect. I'm just coming up for a final time on the end of the committee where it's public participation here. I heard the arguments on both sides on the cats, and I talked to Mrs. Caldwell a little bit there in the back row, and I said, would you be willing to serve on an ad hoc committee for this specific topic with the cats? And I said, we, you could, maybe we could appoint the other group of people, the citizens that were addressing the cat thing themselves. She suggested a local veterinarian should be on that committee. I think Mr. Chikonowitz would be a good candidate as a citizen for the committee. Health and Safety Chair would be good. Now, I don't, when I say ad hoc committee, I don't want to see this thing turn into where our council clerk is coming up and overseeing. Let's just offer use of the council chambers to that group of individuals, they can come up, meet here as they please, come up with some sort of solution. It might take, it might take them two years to come up with something. Once they get something solid, then bring it back to Health and Safety, and then you guys would have final review before sending it to full council. I think that would be a much more expedient process here, because this is, this is probably going to be a lengthy- because this is probably going to be a lengthy continued discussion if the Health and Safety keeps addressing it. I'm just trying to offer a solution, Vicky, to help ease for you as the Health and Safety Chair running these meetings. What do you think about that idea?
Well, I'm remembering Mrs. Caldwell making this statement that if we do a piece of... Or if we have legislation that she's heard where then we could get involved with... If an individual is then bitten by one of these trap neuter return cats and that maybe it's best not to involve the city through legislation, legislating the trap neuter return. And the understanding I had was they just wanted to work among themselves as a group.
They're all talking now.
Yeah. So...
They want to hold those opinions?
Yeah, so...
So less government, more for...
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I say let them do. But obviously, you're mentioning that they're out there talking now. So I personally don't feel there's any need for an ad hoc committee. But then, you know...
Well, and maybe that's what they're doing right now is they're having an ad hoc committee that's self-governed by its own citizens itself.
And there's no reason then to bring the... Sorry, City Council?
Okay. So are you going to leave it in open projects for now? Or are you going to remove it for now until they come up with something and then come back? Because if you're going to totally take the city council out of it, I almost think maybe it should be taken out of open projects until they come back.
I'm not planning on taking trap neuter return out at this point in time. I mean, we can leave it on, wait and see what they have to say. They can get together and do it among themselves, then hey, then we can...
A final other thing. This is the Health and Safety Committee meeting. That's the reason I'm not sitting up there right now. Because this is a Health and Safety Committee meeting and this is... It says in our rules that only the Health and Safety members are to be behind the railing. I'm questioning why the auditor is sitting behind the railing right now. I mean, I could understand maybe at the Finance Committee meeting, but what would the auditor have to do at the Health and Safety Committee meeting?
You want to bring that up at an ad hoc? At one of our ad hoc committee meetings for rules? Because you're addressing a rule...
Well, it's a rule that's already on the books and it says the council president's supposed to enforce the rules. So I'm trying to follow the rules we already have on the books right now.
Anything positive to say, Kurt?
You have a very
I would like to have something tonight. Okey-dokey. Any other public participation? Somebody smile at me, I need it. Thank you, Ray. All right, I am going to adjourn the Health and Safety Committee meeting at 7:34 PM.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, October 17th, 2024.
I'm calling the Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order at 7:38 PM. Members present, Zion Hickman, Carolyn Sherman, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Thea R. Scherick, Chair. First up on the business is public participation.
Thank you.
I'm going to need you to speak up. You've been asked multiple times tonight and every time you get quieter. So before you start, please raise it because it's...
Thank you. Public Lands and Buildings Chair, Mrs. Scherick, I'm sorry.
Okay, Kurt, can you please raise the volume? Because I can't hear you and neither can other people.
Is there a possible way she can raise the volume in there?
No, but please go to the online.
Huh?
I don't think our speakers for this room work very well. Or at all, actually.
I'm here today to speak on Resolution 229-2024, the sale of the North End Fire Station. As you're aware, the last October 1st council meeting I had in the packet, some information about the Danbury Township new fire station. And it mentioned it was $7 million. I actually stopped up at the Danbury Station yesterday. I talked to their chief, he gave me a tour of the station. Because I told him, I said, "We're looking at doing some changes here in Besires and we're possibly looking at selling a station." He said that the station they have now, if they went to build it again, would probably be up in the $12 million price range. The current proposed price of selling the North End Fire Station that this committee has voted on, I believe is somewhere in the $260,000 price range. I believe that that is way too cheap to be selling that. If you were to replace it today, the cost would be way higher than that. I think we're way underselling it at that price. Now, the other thing I'm concerned about is if there's a possibility that one of the elected members of council is trying to bid on this property once it goes up for public bid. Now, I reached out to Mr. Gobrick about ethics concerns. And I would like Mr. Gobrick's opinion to be stated on the record. If any council member is intending on bidding on that property, do they have to abstain from any vote or any discussion on this 229-2024?
That is my understanding. And if you would like a thorough opinion, I can research and write for you.
Okay. Because I... I mean, it just feels like something's going on here behind the scenes with this property. Because initially, this Public Lands and Buildings Committee, the initial price that they wanted to sell it for was $180,000. That's what the original motion that Mr. Hickman made was for. And I was like, "Oh my golly, that is way too underpriced."
Can I get to what your thought is?
Well, it's all tying together. What I'm saying here is, I believe there may be conspiring going on behind the scenes with this council concerning the sale of that property. And the possibility that a council member themselves may be bidding on it. This is a highly unethical situation if that is going to happen. I'm glad Mr. Gobrick gave his opinion that any council member would have to abstain from that vote. Now, this shall also extend to their spouse bidding on it, another business associate that they're in a business partnership with. We all took an oath up here when we took these seats to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of Besires. And I don't believe that selling that property right now is the best interest of the citizens of Besires. We obviously have a shortage of space at the existing fire station right now. And we're going to sell property? Doesn't make sense. It doesn't make any sense at all. Let's do our due diligence on the sale of this property. A commercial appraiser is... A licensed commercial appraiser is the only opinion that a bank would loan money against. The opinions you have now are broker's opinions. They're not a commercial licensed appraiser. As far as I know, the Catanas and the Garbrick Realtors are not licensed commercial appraisers. My suggestion, before you do anything with this, call in a licensed commercial appraiser and see what the actual proper commercial price should be for this property. Thank you, Mrs. Scherick.
No problem, Kurt, thanks. That's 7:44.
When we talked about the North End Fire Station, when I made the first motion, did we have an appraisal for that building at that point?
We requested one and Kurt and the administration deemed that the amounts that we were given were good. So I'm not sure. I guess we're just, you know, backpedaling on what we've said.
So I guess I'm confused on where the conspiring comes in at. But if Mr. Fankhouser wants to make a records request on said conspiracy, he is very much welcome to do so.
Yes, we're on public participation. Come up, Mr. Miller.
800 Rogers Street. Check. Real quick, okay, isn't that $250,000? Is that not a starting bid?
It was the minimum.
Yes.
Right, so...
It's like $269,000 or $210,000.
Mr. Gobrick, as far as somebody being allowed to vote on it, you're saying no. But what if a person on council ends up purchasing it? Is that illegal?
Like I said...
Or their spouse, or their business associate, or whatever else was...
If I'm asked to look into it more thoroughly, I can get you a Okay, yeah, because... very well thought out opinion.
And also, that doesn't mean it's going to be so... If there's somebody, let's just say for example, Kurt wants to buy it. If he puts in a $250,000 bid, if somebody wants to bid higher than that, then they'll bid higher than that, correct? Is that how it works? So I don't understand any of that last, but I just want to make sure I was right.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Mr... You got a seat? Okay. He's been bouncing up and down, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. You're very nice. My question, and somebody, I don't know, can anybody help me? I was under the impression, I don't know how long ago, or even if it's true, what it... Did Mr. Myers buy a house?
That's not part of this at this point in time.
This has to do with a councilperson person...
What happened previously was found to be not
Okay. Once again, so you're shutting me down again, right?
Yes, ma'am, at 7:47, if you'd like to write that down. Mr. White, would you like to come up?
I most definitely will. I got me a good old book going here.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. Obviously, someone took part in my speech. But I wanted to ask this committee on this resolution and the other two resolutions that you have that's in the council packet. I noticed that on 229-2024, it also has, "While reserving the right to reject any and all bids." Now, is that the Safety Service Director?
I'm sorry?
Says right in here in the resolution, "Last after quick deed, therefore while reserving the right to reject any and all bids." Does that fall under the Safety Service Director? Or does that fall under who? The mayor, council?
That would fall under the Safety Service Director.
Okay. So then, if you go to the other two resolutions that you guys have put in this packet, there is no such language in neither one of those to say the same thing. The right to reject or any and all bids. So is a piece of property that's owned by the city, doesn't have the proper verbiage in here to say the same thing about when you're selling a piece of property?
I'm thinking that's part of why it was sent back. And they said it was very poorly put together, that was messed up all over the place for those two.
The other thing too is, is the fire department, the fire chief, and speaking of him, including the union, sent letters to council stating that because of, you know, they need more room. All right? They need places to store their equipment. Okay? That must be easy accessible. Okay? So why are you selling this piece of property when they're currently using it as storage for necessary emergency equipment? And then you're going to make them go up to the service garage and store this stuff to where it's up on Irving Street? And then they have to get into a gate and then into the building to get out necessary emergency equipment? I think that's kind of farfetched. This building is way undervalued, in my opinion. Okay? Because I think it's more valuable to the fire department right now for use. Maybe you need to put a few... Some money into it, maybe fix it up a little bit in there or whatever. But it has a new roof on it. Okay? City paid for that roof. I'm sure it cost a pretty penny to put that roof on that station at Plymouth Street. But why are we giving it up for such a cheap price? Okay? I kind of agree that we need a licensed, you know, appraiser that deals in commercial properties to look at this. Whether it costs us $3,000 or $4,000 or $5,000, I couldn't care less. We could always amp up to the minimum bid. But I think this needs tabled. Okay? That property is too valuable to the city. I mean, if you're going to sell the North End Fire Station, why not sell the water treatment plant? Why not sell all the property of the city of Besires and just get rid of it all? Why just one piece of property? Let's just sell it all. Let's sell the wastewater treatment plant. Maybe we can save the taxpayers some money. Let's see, I have comments back here. You know what I'm saying?
You're getting a lot off track. Can we...
No, no, I'm talking about property of the city.
And are any of those things up, even being spoken about, about being sold? If not, please keep going.
It's in general terms, it's about property owned by the city. The fire station is owned by the city, Madam Chairman. Okay? Why not sell the rest of this? If you're going to sell this, let's sell the rest. This is getting down to hand. This... I meant, I'm not done. Please do not interrupt me.
This is an unused building, not a used building. So it isn't general terms at this point in time.
It's still a good building. Okay? Has new roof, structurally sound. Many of you went through it. You know it's structurally sound. And I can't see wasting a good building that we could use for other purposes also. I mean, I'd even look at the possibility of turning this into, in my book, an enterprise zone for entrepreneurs to use the building in that way, too. If you're going to get rid of it, why not use it for a better cause? I mean, it was mentioned tonight about an enterprise zone and, you know, entrepreneurs to have a building to, you know, place to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe to Mr. White's point real quick. I will have my piece on 22... Or not 22, 229 when it comes up. After the last discussion on the why that we had after that council meeting, the fire chief did say that they were looking at other options and did express that the Irving Street was not a good potential spot. Which is why I said I'll speak to Resolution 229 when it comes up.
Yeah, but you did make a comment that... I'm sorry.
I agree with you. They said that the Irving Street Garage was not acceptable to them, correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Thedell?
Ray Thedell, 210 Ethel Street. I know Mr. Starnar had mentioned it Tuesday in his report, excuse me, about Family Farm and Home donating our apple trees. But I wanted to publicly thank our Family Farm and Home for donating them trees that we did plant Saturday out at the Pines Marsh. And I wanted everyone to know that your mayor, Truka, actually walked the whole length of the trail, cane in tow. I actually heard him make a comment of, "Wow." We got back to one point where you could actually see across the marsh towards Old 30 and he said, "Wow." It's just... It's just a view that not everyone's seen out there. So if you get a chance to get out there, take a few minutes, walk back here, check it out.
That is awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Short speed?
Yes.
Ery Miller, 800 Rogers Street. Hopefully this will be the last time up here. What administration actually brought up selling the fire? The other, the North End? What administration actually brought up selling the fire, the other, the North End?
If I'm remembering correctly, we were looking to sell the North End Station to help purchase the Y. Is that not?
No, it was mentioned being sold by the previous administration. It was mentioned early on this year about selling it because it's sitting there, nothing's happening with it, and it's just kinda becoming an abandoned building only in storage.
When with the one the YMCA was still in a discussion, I thought, I'm not sure who said it, but I thought somebody said the North End Fire Station was also too far away for them to go and get their equipment that they were storing there. So, for, you know, to get up here and say it can be used for storage goes exactly against what, I thought it was the fire chief, I'm not sure. Somebody stated, you know, that wouldn't work because then we get a call, we gotta run out there and get, you know, it needs to be wherever they're, correct?
Yes. Okay, do we have any more public participation? All right, moving on. The next on here is the approval of minutes from October third. Twenty twenty-four Regular Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Hickman, a second by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Now, we've gotten to Resolution two twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
So, for this, I will echo Mr. Fankhauser and Mr. White. I don't think that at this time being that we voted down purchasing the Y, that it would be within the best interest of not just the city and the citizens, but the fire department to sell this building. It seems that we hold a lot of storage capacity in that building, and to sell it at this point would be foolish and reckless.
Any bails?
I don't think we should talk right now either.
Nope, no sale.
Okay. Are we saying the same for two thirty and two thirty-one, twenty twenty-four? Because I see that they did actually find a wonderful use for two thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Is that where they're keeping the bins?
The bins for the recycling.
I think for two thirty-one, I would advocate not selling that either, because it seems that that's working very well for us right now, too.
And two thirty's a really nice third way for them when they're taking stuff over there, in all honesty. Does anybody?
Again, I think that was also part of probably having monies go towards the YMCA purchase.
They've been talking about it for longer than any of us have been on council. All right, so for now, all those are
Tabled.
Tabled. Okay, so we're at twenty twenty-five Airport Improvement Grant.
Did we get our letter from the Air Force Mission? Oh, wait, no, that's something different. Never mind, sorry.
There was a thought in my head, too. Yes, please.
Tommy wished for me to inform you.
Table it for now.
To maybe request legislation to allow him to go out and apply for this grant.
Oh, okay.
It's a grant to be used for the runway lighting at the airport.
That was also as an emergency, wasn't it?
Yeah, he wished to see that as an emergency.
So, it was as an emergency.
Good, not tabled. Okay, so I would entertain a motion for legislation?
I will make a motion for legislation as an emergency.
To go out?
To go out to bid for the twenty twenty-five Airport Improvement Grant.
By the safety?
By the service safety director.
Okay, awesome, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Hickman.
I'll second that.
With a second by Mr. Moritz. Now, we can talk about it. What was your question?
My question is, why is it an emergency?
Because it has to be done now for it to get within the realm of the monies that we're able to get paid for outside of the city.
It essentially has to be done in a certain timeframe.
So, are we in the certain timeframe?
Right now, yes.
As long as we get it as an emergency.
And what happens if it don't passes?
We don't get the money.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Hickman, a second by Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As an emergency.
As emergency. Would that have to be a roll call vote or not?
Well, right now, I have ayes. Do I have anybody opposed? No vote. So, the motion passes with three. All right, so if we could go ahead and get legislation, that'd be amazing. Thank you, sir.
Sure, White.
All right, so now we are looking at updates to the city hunting ordinance. Did we get those figured out by any chance, or?
The hunting did not get done by now.
Okay, so we're tabling that for right this minute. All right, so do we have anything on the open projects list we wish to speak about?
Not at this time.
I do not.
And now, public participation for somebody who's not coming back and forward.
Kurt Fankhauser, six sixteen Prospect Street. I want to thank this committee for, especially you, Mr. Hickman, with having talked to the chief and realized the space needs with the fire department and reversing your guys' previous will of what the committee was gonna do with that property. I am very impressed with the outcome on this situation with the two twenty-nine dash twenty-two four right now, and I think you guys made the right choice tonight for the citizens of Bussars. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, now that that's over, we're going to adjourn the meeting at eight oh one PM. Thank you.
Service Committee, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I want a call to order. Service Committee meeting at eight oh six. Members present, Ciernan Sharick, Kevin Myers, Zan Hickman, I myself, Chris Moritz, Chair. Any public participation this time?
Kurt Fankhauser, six sixteen Prospect Street. Could you get me the copy, Mr. Moritz, of the current working draft Title Nine?
It's in order. Packet's a minute.
Oh, it's in the packet tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, never mind.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, I'd like to see if I can get approval for the minutes for October.
I'll make a motion to defer the minutes from the October third, twenty twenty-four Regular Service Committee meeting.
I'll second.
Ciernan Sharick first, Zan Hickman second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Title Nine was supposed to be brought up tonight. It's going to be sent back to administration. I know Mr. Long, must have left us already, was concerned, still concerned about the one part he was wanting to know about. That has not changed. That's still the same from day one of working on this. Tim, Jeff, and John, in administration, in their departments, they want both, all three to go back over it again with administration. They have a meeting Monday just to make sure Donald T's cross out of I's, make sure we won't have to go back and redo this again for a while. I know. I know. So, I'm gonna table that for now. Any open projects anybody wants to talk about?
No, thank you.
Not at this time.
Public participation?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, adjourn at?
Eight oh eight.
Planning Committee, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Meeting will come to order at eight ten. We have Ciernan Sharick, Carolyn Sharman, Vicky Bishon, James Beach here. Public participation for plating.
Kurt Fankhauser, six sixteen Prospect Street. So, it's my understanding tonight, the proposed changes tonight on thirty-five dash twenty-two four is what's in bold on ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two four. Is that correct?
Mr. Garber, that's the way you wrote it up, correct?
Correct. Okay. The resurfacing requirements located in the downtown business district, that being only the district that requires the asphalt or concrete, so other districts could potentially not have asphalt or concrete.
We're working on that.
Correct. Oh, you're still
We're still.
gonna be discussing it tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
What's gonna happen, and I might as well tell you now? I would like to table it because we're gonna have Jeff Dunn and Dylan from McKeevers come in, and we're gonna have to, we need to talk to them about this. They have some thoughts, and also on the ponds, they have some thoughts on that. So, hopefully, next committee meeting, we can have them both in here and get us updated on this.
Okay. Relating to the resurfacing, I highly recommend the, as it's proposed, only requiring the asphalt or concrete in the downtown business district. There's currently a business, which is the Tap House down there that just opened up. They're running out of parking space. They started to potentially rent a space across the street from Vassels to take care of their parking situation. That lot is not in the downtown business district. It is in the apartment residential district, I believe, and it's, there's a gravel lot there right now. I think they wanted to expand that and make it a little bit bigger, and I guess they might not have realized that they might have had to go and call for a VZA meeting because of that being apartment residential and you're making a change in it. I'm not one hundred percent sure, but it's a pressing issue for them right now. They're actually, they told me they was issued a stop work order.
Oh, Mike didn't mention that.
The owner of the property, the owner of the Tap House called me and told me they were trying to expand that parking lot, and they was red-tagged.
Okay.
So, I don't know if there's any possible way we could speed this up, because it's, you know, we're gonna be going into the colder season, and there might be more.
What's his plans? What's his plan? Is he gonna concrete it? Is he gonna?
Well, I don't think.
Asphalt it, or?
I have no idea, but I mean, I think right now, he's just trying to get something in there now so that people just have somewhere to be, because there's, the whole Mary Street block there is just packed sometimes when you drive there. There's no place to park.
Right.
And I just, I'm just trying to advocate for a small business here so they can be successful.
I want them to be successful.
Yep. Thank you.
So, they were red-tagged for what?
I'm not exactly sure. I haven't had time to talk to Mike about it, but it might have had something to do with that being a residential zoned district and them wanting to use it for a commercial parking lot, and they might have had to get a variance. I think that might, I'm not one hundred percent sure.
To me, that would be a private parking lot. Wouldn't that be a?
Well, if they're using it to support a commercial business across the street, that I, I, I.
I'll get with Mike tomorrow.
And then he did express concern to me that he was worried that he was going to have to asphalt it in order to get it up and running, and I said, ah, I said, I think we're doing something that possibly, because it was brought up to him, that Bakers was required to go with asphalt on that parking lot there with Bussars Diner used to be. And I said, no, I said, that's downtown business district, and this proposed lot you have is not in the downtown business district. It's in apartment residential. So, I said, I don't think the asphalt requirement is there, but I, I didn't know why exactly this was getting set back. I'm glad you addressed it.
So, you know he's for sure in apartment residential?
I looked it up on the city website, and I pulled up the zoning map a couple of days ago, and you could kinda see on the east side of the alley there, it was the color of what the AR district is. I think it's the purple. I think he was trying to get a lot in there quickly without having to spend the money on the asphalt. Maybe he was gonna spend the asphalt money down the road. Don't know. I mean, it's been, there's been partially a gravel lot there for decades, so I mean, I don't, in my own mind, I don't see why it wouldn't be something to the VZA if they needed to have approval to do, couldn't approve it out.
I know he's handed out a lot of stop work orders lately. I don't see nothing in here about the parking lots.
In the AR?
In an AR. Front yard lot area.
It might be something that can be, because you're up at City Hall every day, you know, stop and talk to Mike, see what's going on.
Yeah, I wish I'd have been this week.
I'm gonna yield to the podium this time. Thank you.
So, ordinance number thirty-five, twenty twenty-four, I wanna wait for
Fifty minutes first.
Oh. Any more public participation?
Chris Moritz, two 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 six Plymouth Street. I believe, if I'm listening to other conversations, that even if, I know you're working on rezoning some stuff, if that was actually put into business district, there's still a lot of times where they have to make the changes if they have to make them, or it's not a right away thing. You don't have to do it like tomorrow or anything.
No, we have to be human about it.
Right.
So, any changes that we would make to zoning currently would be added in, but they have to, they have to abide by the zoning laws. It's there now.
Right, and I think we were talking about zoning laws, that there is a timeline to do something once
Yes.
the city has asked them to pave something.
Yeah, we know they can't wave a magic wand.
Right, yeah, right.
And make it happen.
I just wanted to bring that up, too, since. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, public participation. Ordinance number thirty-five, twenty twenty, approval of the minutes for October third, twenty twenty-four Regular Plating Meeting.
Mr. Me.
Yes.
I give you a motion to approve the minutes for October third, twenty twenty-four Regular Plating Committee meeting.
Thank you. Shall I have a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Vicky. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All four. Now, ordinance thirty-five, twenty twenty-four, BCO one one eight nine point oh three B. General resurfacing. We're gonna wait for Jeff Dunn and Dylan to come to talk to us to express their concerns about the resurfacing and where it should be done and what zones it should be done in. So, is that okay? Okay. Ponds, the same thing. We'll have some questions for them then for ponds. Ethel Street Alley Vacation. So, per the lawyers' suggestion that we not battle the railroad?
That would not what?
We would not battle the railroad because the vacation of that alley butts up against the railroad that we need them to write off. So, we're gonna table that. Is that okay?
Yeah.
We're gonna table that for now. Then, if they come through with the signatures, then we can proceed with the vacation of the Ethel Street Alley. Open projects. Open projects?
No, I have none.
Nothing, open projects. Public participation. Seeing none, we adjourn at eight twenty.
Finance Committee, October Finance Committee, October seventeenth, 2024.
Call a Finance Committee meeting to order at eight twenty-two PM. Members present are James Meach, Christopher Moritz, Vicki DeShawn, and myself, Kevin Myers, as Chair. Public participation for finance. Seeing none. Yeah, before you, the minutes for the October third, 2024 Regular Finance Committee Meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the October third, 2024 Regular Finance Committee meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. DeShawn, a second by Mr. Me. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. First item is the approval of the 2025 Tax Budget Auditor List.
So this is annual approval of the, of the tax budget. It is from the Budget Commission of Crawford County, and it, they're asking for us to provide a resolution accepting the amounts and rates. It basically just says how much we're going to receive as an entity for property taxes this year. For the piece of legislation that will be voted on later tonight, it has the exhibits on it, if you want to take a look at that, for how much we will be receiving. And none of this is determined by my office. This is all from the Budget Commission of Crawford County. So that's about it on that.
Any major changes from last year?
It looks like we're actually going up from six, so if you look at the exhibit under all levies, it looks like we last year received six hundred sixty-five thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars ninety-six cents, but there is a portion of that I have to do as a prepaid that the county withholds, so we don't truly receive a check for all those funds. But it is bumping up to seven hundred ten thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents, so.
And just for clarification, the reason this has been requested as an emergency is?
Because it is due by October twenty-fifth, 2024.
Mr. Me, any questions for the auditor?
No.
Mr. Moritz?
I don't either.
Mrs. DeShawn?
No.
All right, and I will entertain a motion to request emergency legislation, which you see the draft in front of you of resolution, proposed Resolution two thirty-two, that accepts the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax rates and certifying them to the county auditor. Declaring an emergency, so I'll entertain that emotion as an emergency.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Me, and a second by Mr. Moritz. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call, Mr. Me.
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion carries four to zero. Next up, Auditor Lewis, is the appropriations for Park and Rec Electric?
Yes, we need a little more money on the Park and Rec electric line, so I'm asking for two thousand dollars and fund two fifty Parks and Recreation under program seven three one ten Parks and Playgrounds and under twenty-three contractual services.
Are you requesting that as an emergency?
I am.
And the reason for that is?
Need to pay the bill.
Okay. All right, so you have the explanation from the auditor, two thousand dollars into the Parks and Rec Fund, seventy-three ten, light item twenty-three, as an emergency.
So moved.
Second again. I have a motion by Mr. Me, and a second by Mr. Moritz. Any discussion?
None.
If not, roll call vote, Mr. Me.
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion carries four to zero. Mr. Me, any open projects you wish to discuss?
I'm good tonight, thank you.
Mr. Moritz?
I'm also good tonight.
Mrs. DeShawn?
And I'm also good tonight.
Thank you. Public participation? Seeing none, we will adjourn at eight twenty-seven PM.